Thank you for coming to the school committee tonight. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, I startled everybody there with the -- I saw your eyes go, sorry. It's very light, you don't realize it. Okay. Do we have anyone that would like to address the school committee tonight? And seeing nobody, we will move on. We have none of -- not tonight because of the vacation, right? Or just not here. So, we don't have our student representatives yet tonight. They might come in a little while, and if they do, we'll put them on right away. And so, we're hoping right along tonight, it's a good sign.
It's a good sign.
Old Business? Anybody have any -- our Old Business, I checked, we only have like three items open in Old Business, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Yeah. Until I ask the next question. Anybody have any new business? Anything they want to add? Yep.
Actually, it's really not that new. It's a sort of a follow-up, it's in our minutes from a couple of meetings ago. At the last two school council meetings at PCIS and at this meeting, at our last meeting, we talked about the connectivity, that we were concerned that where -- that there are some students, as you know, we've talked about this, that may not have internet access at home. And I know that we surveyed the district many years ago, and it was about ninety-one or ninety-two percent had access. My hunch is that number hasn't changed much, because access is expensive, and I know we have a lot of families who struggle, who are on support. So, at the PCIS two council, we were beginning to try to figure out how we can get that data. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's only one percent. Wouldn't that be great, it was only one percent? But we're trying to figure out how to -- because many students don't want to admit, it's an embarrassment for them, how to ask the question, where to ask the question, and then collect the data. And I know we brought this up last meeting, and I just bring it up as something that I still think we need to get some information on.
You actually have it as an open item in the Old Business?
Oh, we do? I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
The one percent and everything.
Okay. One of the things that I'll suggest, and I'll make sure that we keep it on our radar with my staff, is we'll investigate opportunities on how to use some technology resources to try to pull that information. I think the issue that we have is how do we get that from the cross-section of the wide demographic of Plymouth? And I think that is going to be the biggest challenge for us. When we've done surveys in the past, I think, you know, we're happy if we get forty percent return. So, I think we have to find a way of getting a full-court press on getting information back from parents. And that's one of the things that we need to try to do.
Two things. I do know that at PCIS, because I'm on the council, they have opened up their computer lab in the morning, and they keep it open after school. And I would imagine other schools are doing that as well. And students are coming in, and they're coming in saying, "We don't have a printer, that's why we're here."
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was wondering, why do we have to survey parents? If we just asked a simple question anonymously, "Do you have internet access at home, yes or no?", would that not give us good data?
Yeah. And that, you know, great suggestion, and that can be done during the school day, I mean, very quickly.
Yeah.
We could do, we could actually design some kind of opportunity where kids can do it in school, you know, but that's something we can discuss.
Okay.
Good suggestion.
And the libraries.
I was thinking, parents, you know what I mean, households and so on, but the kids will, the kids will tell you.
Kids will tell you, and if it's anonymous.
We could actually even ask them if it's through a home connectivity, or is it through cell connectivity?
Yeah, we have to make sure.
In what?
They can't do work on this.
I agree, and that's why I want to clarify what kind of access they have.
Right.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
Phone, so they're not just counting the phone.
Yeah, right, they would count their phone, they'd say yes to that, can't do any research on your phone.
Reports and proposals from the superintendent, Dr. Miasis.
Yes, tonight I have a couple of things to report on. I want to give you an update on the Plymouth South High School field work that we're doing. Tomorrow night, I will be presenting updated information to the Board of Selectmen, so that they can take that up and vote to put this on town meeting agenda. So, I believe I'm on for eight fifteen or eight thirty tomorrow evening. So, I will be there. I wrote a memo to Town Manager, Oregi, regarding the final numbers. The final numbers for the turf fields, both fields, it's three point one million, the number that we did use the night of the first presentation. The contingency dollars at the close of the project, we're still estimating between one point five to one point eight million of contingency. The goal is to get town meeting approval, and what I'm being told, it's a two-thirds vote at town meeting. So, once they authorize the Board of Selectmen or Town Manager to sign the Department of Revenue document that would extend borrowing for the three point one, that could be executed. Keep in mind that once the project is closed, September twenty eighteen, we would then reimburse the remaining contingent dollars, contingency dollars, to help pay off the three point one million of initial borrowing. So, that is what is left to finish the project at Plymouth South for the two fields, Fields Two and Three. We will be presenting this information at every caucus in Plymouth. The caucus dates and times are not in print yet, we're working on getting those, and we'll share that with the committee. If you're available, love to have you.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that later, actually.
Yeah. And then, I will also be speaking at the precinct chairs meeting with all the chairs, and release the same information that we've shared with Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. Keep in mind that two weeks ago, the Finance Committee voted in favor of the turf fields moving forward to town meeting, eight to three. So, we'll find out tomorrow night what the Board of Selectmen's vote will be, and then, if that's successful, it'll be placed on the agenda, and we'll make town meeting. So, we have a lot of work to do between now and town meeting, and I will be meeting with parents, and I've already met with a group of parents, my team, last week before vacations, so just to kind of give information out there to the community. And we're going to work on some fact information that people can have, a couple of pieces of documentation that they can take with them. So, we have a lot of work cut out for us moving forward. The next item I have is town hall. I know there's been a lot of discussion regarding town hall. I know Ms. Tricelli was at the capital outlay, and the town hall request for refurbishment of town hall really didn't get very much traction, is actually, I think, second, third to the bottom of the list. So, the question is continually being posed regarding, is the school department going to take town hall? And I say, "Well, it's a matter of money." There is no, there is absolutely no indication that we weren't interested in town hall, it's just it costs money to actually get to the point where it needs some work. So, I know there will be some debate between now and town meeting, you might hear it. I know it was brought up at last, the last building committee meeting, and I've been asked by people at town hall, "When are you moving in? What do you want? What are you going to, what do you want us to leave?" And my question is, is we really need to look at how we're going to actually get this funded, and based on capital outlay, it doesn't look that the funding's going to be there. So, I do believe that in the future, we're going to have to have some level of discussion about what that next step is, to formally reject it.
I think it has to be sooner rather than later, because I've been approached also, and I point them to the fact that we've already discussed it two or three times, and let our feelings be known, but surprisingly, nobody watches our broadcast.
And I will tell you, I have publicly stated that it is a great building. I think it is a fantastic opportunity for the school department. The problem is, is based on the facility report that was done by the town, for the next five to seven, eight years, there are some items that need to be repaired in that building, and, you know, we thought it would be in the best interest to do it before people move into it, opposed to being, you know, occupants of the building. And that's one of the things that we've discussed. So, I'm sure that we'll put it on the agenda for further discussion, Mr. Begley, as time goes forward.
Right, I think we need to remind everyone that when we talked about it, we were assuming that the cost, based on what Mr. Montron had told us, around nine hundred thousand. And we had said that with all the things we want to do, and all the programs we want to do that directly benefit children, we didn't want to spend that kind of money on stuff that was not a direct benefit to the children. So, while we all want to move to that building, we want to do it for free, so. Dr. Sorensen first, and then Mrs. Burgess.
As Dr. Miasis said, this has come up at the building committee now probably three, maybe four times, and each time, we give the exact same answer to the one that you just spoke of, saying that we would like to, but we have higher priorities. And I think what happens is, certain people don't want to hear that answer. And in fact, there was a statement made the other night at building committee meeting, "Well, it was good enough for town hall, why isn't it ..." Well, I just editorialized. The statement was made, "It was good enough for town hall." The unspoken part of it was, "Why isn't it good enough for you?", but that was not spoken. So, I think people really want us to take that building, and that's why we're having such a hard time, getting people to understand financially, it's not a priority of ours.
Right. Yeah, kind of what I was going to say, except that once we move in, then it'll be
our dime.
We have to do it, we have to do it early, otherwise, it is our dime.
And, yeah, that is, that was sort of mentioned, that it's good enough, but it isn't good enough. We have to make some moves to make it fit for our, for our own use, besides what needs to be done in there. And their motivation to keep, for us to keep it, of course, is they want to keep all their records there. And if we don't take it, then what do they do with their records if they have to sell? You know, this is the big problem. But they need to, they need to buy into helping us out, too.
Dr. Miasis, you wanted to say something there?
And that's it. I mean, we have some, you know, some thoughts to put on the table, probably down the road here.
Okay.
The next item regarding town meeting is, I believe the Board of Selectmen are also entertaining, this is a town meeting relative, but it's to Mount Pleasant. I believe they're going to vote formally tomorrow night to put it on the market. So, that's on their agenda, so.
It's been six months?
Yeah, yeah. And it was also voted by the Finance Committee and the Building Committee.
The Building Committee voted.
Everybody forget I said that.
Okay. So, basically, that building will be put on the market.
Good.
And, you know, I think that was the, I'm, that was the intent.
That was the point of us doing it in the first place, that was the intent, was to try to be team players and show that it's an opportunity for the town to pick up some revenue, much-needed revenue. So, it's surprising that it took so long to get to that point, but as long as they're getting there, I guess that's, that's a good thing.
It's moving forward. And the last item I have, I think you're aware that next week, we will be going through the Department of Education's comprehensive district review. I know there's an email that got sent out. We do need participation from the school committee.
Later.
Wednesday at four thirty. So, Mr. Begley, I think is going to help us out with that under his report.
God help us, I'm the coordinator of the calendar, which is a dangerous thing, but we're going to do that later. Yes.
All right. And, that said, Mr. Begley, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. With the fields tomorrow, when we're talking about, just one thing, I think a few people were confused, and I know you said it, but maybe just to stress it, that there's the upfront cost, and then there's what we're reimbursing.
Yes.
And I think people were hearing that different, like we were saying three or four numbers. And what Dr. Miasis was trying to explain, right, was, this is what it's going to cost for us out of this budget, but then, it's just like when we did the full-day kindergarten, we said, "This is the initial upfront cost, and then a year down, we'll be able to get this much reimbursement." It's the same sort of thing. It's, this is, we know what the cost is, here it is, but we're going to be able to give you a million and a half back almost right away, you know, a year down the road once the project is completed, and the money for the contingency money is legally releasable.
Absolutely. And that, just to, you know, spark a little bit of recollection, this has happened on town meeting floor a number of times, when projects have come before the board, or before town meeting, where a project is getting some supplementary funding, and that funding would then help reimburse the project. So, this opportunity, and the way it's being presented, has been done by town meeting in the past.
Yes.
So, it's not foreign to town meeting.
Right. It is if someone's trying to make a reverse argument or something.
Yeah, yeah.
We just want to make sure it's.
I got you.
Thank you. Retirements, Mrs. Frye.
Yes, we have two retirements. Kathleen Jones, who's a grade six teacher at Plymouth South Middle School for twenty-nine years, and John Morash, who's a technical studies teacher at Plymouth South High School for welding, after eighteen years of service.
Ms. Badger?
On behalf of the school committee, I'd like to thank these two individuals for their service to the district for a combined forty-seven years, and wish them a happy retirement.
Thank you. Ms. Hunt, we have two correspondences.
Yes, there are two pieces of correspondence tonight, thank you letters from science curriculum coordinator Allison Riordan, to the Coca-Cola Bottling Company of Cape Cod regarding their generous donations in support of Plymouth's annual science fair. Mrs. Riordan commended the Coca-Cola Company for their longstanding contributions. Sorry, there's a word missing. "To the celebration of students' hard work," and offered commendations to our culinary department as the best that education has to offer.
Very good, thank you. Now, we have our first program update. We have our friends from the Southern Massachusetts Credit Union going to give us an update for the South High School project. Dr. Miasis?
Yes, I'd like to invite Dan Walts from Southern Mass Credit Union to the table, and I know he has members of his board here tonight, and they are excited tonight to come to the table to introduce the latest addition to Southern Mass Credit Union, which would be a branch office at Plymouth South High School. And I think all of you are aware of the program that we have at Plymouth North High School, and how successful it has been. We're very excited to enter into another opportunity to have Southern Mass join the Plymouth Public Schools. We think it's a great opportunity to have a branch associated with the vocational programming. We did a walkthrough about two weeks ago.
Yes.
And I think the excitement is unbelievable, knowing that if things go well, we can be ready to open the branch close to the beginning of the school year next year, which would be a wonderful opening of the school. So, I probably stole a lot of what he was going to say, but with that said, Dan, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Gary, and thank you to the school committee. I don't know if you remember me, but I do remember a lot of you. We last presented to you back in August of two thousand and thirteen, is when we made the presentation for Plymouth North Branch. And I must commend you on another wonderful building that you are erecting. It's beautiful. I've had the opportunity with Patty and Mark and Gary to go through it, and I'm very impressed with what you're doing here in Plymouth. And we are extremely honored to be part of what you're doing, because we believe, as you do, in education, we believe in financial literacy and financial education. And as part of this evening's presentation, I would like to give you an update of what we've done at North, so you can see what we're going to do at South. But first, I would like to briefly introduce everyone that's with me this evening. We do have members of my Board of Directors as well, from the management team. One of our board members, the very first one here, Bob Wallace, is a resident of Plymouth. Our board chair, David Darmathol, Fred Pacchini, a director, Pam Borgalt. Rose Fiera is our manager of the school savings and youth programs and the branches at our different high schools. And Richard Ellis, he's also a director for the credit union, as well as our clerk and treasurer. We are all extremely excited again about being here. So, with that, I will start my presentation. And Nancy, if I run into problems, if you would help me, I would appreciate it. There, it actually worked. I wanted to give you an update on the credit union. The last time we were here, we did not have as many branches that we did. We've been a very progressive credit union, we've grown. Of course, we added North, but we also added a branch, a full-service branch in Fall River. Last time, we were only ten thousand members, now we're fourteen thousand five hundred members. We were less than two hundred million in assets, we're now to over two hundred million in assets. And all of our statistics are there, as we listed. The other thing we've done is added the Allen's to our field of membership, so we can now accept individuals from Nantucket and Dukes. We can also accept half of the state of Rhode Island as well. So, I wanted to preface my presentation to you to let you know, we are a progressive credit union as well, just like you are a progressive school district. We are a progressive credit union, and we want to grow with you and help you succeed in your mission to serve your students here in Plymouth. The next item also is to let you know that we are technology savvy, and that's extremely important to our youth, as well as to us. I love this new feature that we just added in the last two months. It is our mobile app, and it has fingerprint technology, so it's very secure, I'm very pleased about that. The other thing that we do, we have current and emerging payment trends. Our mobile wallet, our debit card and credit card have been tokenized, so they can be uploaded to a mobile wallet, and you can use those Apple Pay, Samsung Pay, and Android Pay. So, we're up to date with the latest technology as well, and I wanted you to feel comfortable about that, so you can recognize that we do stay up with the latest trends in the financial services world. Here is the team that works at Plymouth. They are a wonderful group of individuals. We have Maria, Amy, and Rose. They have been involved with the program, and they work at Plymouth North, and they will be working at Plymouth South as well, supervising the students and implementing the various programs that we have in place. This is the branch, I'm sure you all remember, when we had the opening, which was actually three years ago last month. And it is a beautiful branch, we have so many compliments from our colleagues who visit it and see it, and the participation that we've had from the students, faculty, and staff, we couldn't be more pleased with. This is the brochure that I think you've all seen, that we developed specifically for Plymouth North. And for Mark and Patty, we will be developing a specific Panthers brochure for Plymouth South as well. We give five dollar coupon to the students to open a savings account with us. We're going to be doing the exact same thing at Plymouth South. This is the statistics for the branch, if, as we talked about, we did open back in January of two thousand and fourteen. There's been a hundred and sixty-three members generated from the students, faculty, staff, and community. We have two hundred and thirty-three deposit accounts, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We have sixty-eight loan accounts of four five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and we had six, and soon-to-be seven, students who have worked at the branch from Plymouth North, which we are extremely pleased with as well. And that leads into the next slide. Here was one of our first student, Anne Marie, who worked at the branch. We had three DECA students do a project for us and for their DECA program on marketing, which we were very pleased with as well. And that was Chris Ryan, and, I'm not staying up with my presentation, I apologize, and Craig. They were the three boys that actually did that program. We had Helen, who worked at the branch. And our most recent employee was Fred. And this is Fred with Maria. We just did a community project at all of our branches, including the high school branches, where we collected items for the homeless. And this is what the community here at Plymouth North collected, for blankets, gloves, and hats and scarves, which will be given to the Plymouth Coalition of the Homeless, and other organizations that help the homeless in our region. So, we were very pleased with the participation that we had from Plymouth, and with all the students who have participated in working at the branch as well. We've given out three one thousand dollar student scholarships to high school graduating seniors since we've been here, who are members and joined the credit union. It was Lenai, Connor, and Brayden, Brendan, pardon me. They all went to colleges in the area. As you can see, one went down to George Washington University, which is very, very impressive. We're very pleased with the participation that we've had, and we're going to be doing this exact same thing at Plymouth South as well. The next thing that we wanted to update you, what we do is we have a special assembly every year at each beginning of the school year, and at that assembly, in addition to giving out some literature about the program and financial literacy, we give each class treasury five hundred dollars. And the reason we do that, we know that students need to raise money over their high school career for their different class treasuries, we want to give them a boost to that. So, each class, since we opened from two thousand and twenty, fourteen through two thousand and twenty, we've given a five hundred dollar donation to their class treasury. This is something I'm exceptionally pleased about, and I think, if you all remember, I think we gave you one of these, and I'd be glad to pass these around, so you can see these. We give each one of your students at the high school, one of these Guides to Money, which is a wonderful guide that helps them understand budgeting, insurance, financial planning, how to appropriately manage a checking account, how to understand credit, and how to take, make sure that they balance checking accounts. It's a wonderful guide that we give to each of the students in those assemblies, and since we've opened, we've given out just approximately seventeen hundred and fifty of those booklets to the students. The next item is one that I'm exceptionally proud of, it's one that we've started back in two thousand and thirteen at our various schools that we partner with throughout the region. It's called the CU for Reality Fair. It is a fair where students learn to spend their money wisely. And this is a long, wordy slide, but it actually explains in detail what it is. It requires the students to pick a chosen profession, and then what they are to do is to research the starting salary, not the maximum, but what they're going to start out with when they get out of college, or high school, whichever the case may be. And we want them to spend one month's salary. We then, Ms. Rose is very adept at doing this, she goes out to the community, and Plymouth has been exceptional with their business community participating in the gymnasium, where they learn to spend this money. It's a wonderful fair. We also involve your resource officers and the police department as well, which we're talking about in a couple slides here. This is last year's, this was in our newsletter, the different schools that have participated in our different reality fairs. We do this at Fairhaven High, we do it at Global Learning Charter Public School in New Bedford, we do several parochial schools in New Bedford, and of course, we do Plymouth North. Since we have done the program, this is, by the way, what each student gives, we have a special assembly where we go over how to go through the program. And what I would like to highlight is how we use the police department, and that is under number nine. We have the police department come and actually give out citations for speeding, texting, and minor offender offenders. The reason we do that is because we want students to learn what happens to your insurance rate when that happens. So, if they happen to get one of those, and they have a car, we have a special code, so the police officer knows they have a vehicle or motorcycle, not that they're using public transportation, because they wouldn't get this, but then they have to go back to the insurance agent and get an updated monthly cost for their insurance. We want them to see what we all know, so we want them to experience that as well. This is the budget sheet that we've developed, and it is an after-tax budget sheet. As you can see, it's based upon their chosen profession. We want them to see that if you make, in this circumstance, forty-six thousand dollars, you're not going to get forty-six thousand dollars. We want them to see what the take-home pay is after. We want them to see what the take-home pay is after FICA, after state taxes, after federal taxes, and of course, after the most employees, as you know, do charge a certain fee for participation in a healthcare plan. So we have that taken into consideration as well, as you can see on this sheet. And then all the rest of this needs to be filled in at the different vendors throughout the course of the fair. By the way, since we have put the fair in place, we have had 1,990 students participate that we have sponsored into various school districts. Here in Plymouth North, it's been 502 is how many of those students are represented by Plymouth. This real reality is also part of it. We all know at the end of the month, it's not always the same. Some months, it's good. Some months, it's bad. Some months, it's in between. So this is what this wheel does. It actually gives the students a dose of that reality that's unexpected, which may be good, bad, or indifferent. So this is what the wheel does when they are done with the fair. They go through that process. These are pictures from the actual fairs at Plymouth North in 2014. So you can see the different levels of participation that we had. Couple slides there that show that. And this is what 2016's fair, the one we just did. Unfortunately, 2015, if you remember what the year was like, there were several snow days. And unfortunately, we couldn't work in a time that we could fit the reality fair in. So that was the only reason why it was skipped in 2015. At Plymouth South, the Panthers, we are planning to do exactly the same thing and work what we have done at Plymouth North, work that with the administration there. They will be getting the $5 coupons. They will receive the $500 for their class treasury. We will be having a student scholarship for a graduating high school senior. We will also be giving them the Guides to Money booklet. It's exactly the same program as what we have. And we'll be, of course, operating a branch office there exactly the same as we have done at Plymouth North. This is directly from your architects. They gave us just the outline. Then our team, New England Design, who actually did Plymouth North, which I hope you're pleased with the way it turned out, they are going to design the interior this, which, as you know, is a little different than Plymouth North, because it is behind a closed-door system, unlike the opening to the hallway that Plymouth North has. Plymouth South will be behind that. So this is the layout of the offices. And we had their renderings of what it will look like from the hallway. You can see through the windows there of what the branch will look like and where the ATM will be located right down the hall as well from the branch. This is what the interior will look like. Again, we're keeping our same Cape Cod, field, New England type of atmosphere that we have. It's just a little bigger here than what it is at Plymouth North. And this is the branch manager's office that will be there as well. So the actual layout is all ready. We are all set. We know we will be able to complete it by the time that you open so we can have one grand opening together with you all. And again, I can't thank you enough for the opportunity to be a part of the school district. We love working with you all. Kathleen McSweeney, Kathy Schramm, the whole administration at Plymouth North has been wonderful. And the experience that we've had, of course, with the two Garrys, I can't say anything but good things about that. And I'm looking forward to working with Patty and Mark at South as well. You have a great administrative team. And again, we very much appreciate the opportunity to partner with you and hope you feel the same about Southern Mass Credit Union. So with that, I would be glad to entertain any of your questions or anything whatsoever.
Any questions or comments they'd like to make?
Just a quick one. I was always so curious about the, how many students actually cashed in their $5?
Well, we have about 68 students that are members of the credit union. The rest are faculty, administration, and staff of the 130 some that we have. We advertise on the closed-circuit system, the reminder to students to come in and take advantage of that $5. What we hear a lot is, I already have a bank account. My parents have already started a savings account for me. We tell, it's free $5. You can't go wrong. And honestly, we don't pressure the students into doing anything. I think the administration knows this. Please feel free to talk to Kathy McSweeney about that. It's just, we want to encourage them to save, and we'd really like to get a lot more. So we're doing all the effort we can to encourage them, take advantage of that $5. And that's what we really tried to have encouraged at our very first assembly that we have when we meet with the students, to do that.
Make it 20.
Thank you very much. I personally want to say that I get a lot of calls and letters and emails as the years roll by, and I just want to say, I have only heard positive feedback on the whole banking experience at North. And I know all of the administrative staff have said the same thing, shared the same thing with me. So it's a great partnership, and we're looking forward to it at South, too. Now, this is an action item, so can I get a motion? Mr. Morgan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve adding the Southern Massachusetts Credit Union at Plymouth South High School.
Very good. And second it? Ms. Badger, second it? Any further discussion?
I'm unable to log on tonight, so we're going to have to make oral votes.
So we'll have to do it the old-fashioned way. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. And thank you for expanding this into the southern part of town. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We are looking forward to it and can't wait to open the branch. Thank you for the opportunity again.
Thank you for all of the members of your bank that have come tonight. It was very nice.
And we believe September...
Pass one thing. I'm sorry, Gary. There's one board member who was not able to come that you all know very well, Mark Sylvia. And he wanted me, if it had been bad for me to forget this, to send his highest regards to you all, and the fact that he very much would have loved to have been here this evening, but unfortunately was unable to be here. And I'm sure you all remember Mark as a town manager. I would have been very remiss if I had missed that, so I apologize.
No problem. And we do anticipate that we'll be opening in conjunction with the start of school, which I think, I mean, I think it just would be a beautiful kickoff to opening the building and opening the facility.
Very good. Very, very good. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming today.
Thank you, everybody.
Now we have our out-of-town overnight field trips. We have two of them. First is an international field trip to the Galapagos Islands, which is pretty exotic.
Yes, tonight, we have Alex and Nicole here to present information regarding the out-of-country field trip to the Galapagos Islands. And actually, we have a student here as well. So I'll let you both take it away. This is not your first time in front of the committee, so you're like veterans, so go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I would like to start by saying that the main reason why we bring such an exotic and different field trip is because we believe that those type of opportunities are very hard to happen if you don't go on an excursion. And those are the kind of dreams that our students have, and they wouldn't be able to realize that or ever make that happen if we weren't offering those opportunities for them. And we believe that by giving them such planning time for over a year in advance, they'll give them ways for budgeting, preparing, and making those dreams come true. So by being able to save up, administer well, keep up with grades, do well in school, and prove to their parents, they can actually have something to look forward to. And personally, whenever I actually go to work, I always have something to look forward on vacation. And I say, I'm going to do my best now because I'm saving my money, and then I'll be able to go on a trip. And that's the kind of mentality that we are trying to give to our students as well. And on this trip to the Galapagos, I think the name speaks for itself, what the kind of discoveries and things that students will be in contact with. And relating to the biology curriculum, I don't think there is anything else that could ever be spoken for. So our students will be exposed to not only the research facilities where Darwin actually had great impact. They'll be in contact with nature. They'll be able to do some other activities that will be exposing them to all the three main islands in the Galapagos, visit the capital, be stepping in two different hemispheres at the same time, and learn a little bit more about its culture of Ecuador.
Yeah, from a biology teacher's standpoint, this is a great opportunity to kind of show our students firsthand everything that we teach them in that unit. And, you know, we can say all you want, you know, look at the tortoises that Darwin, you know, saw. But to actually say, this could be a tortoise that Darwin saw, is an opportunity that is, you just can't, you know... Like Alex said, it's kind of hard to do on your own. So offering a trip to this, at this nature is going to be phenomenal for them. So it's just, I was just excited. When I saw the word Galapagos, I just lit up because I was so excited about it. So I'm excited for the students, too. But, um, so yeah, we actually brought with us a student that went to Costa Rica with us. This is Julia Ford. She was a junior at Plymouth North. And we wanted to bring her along as kind of a little testimony, because we know that sometimes these trips can be a little costly. And we brought Julia with us because I know it's usually a concern of offering these trips to everybody. And, you know, what we can do or what we can offer them as far as fundraising opportunities or pretty much motivation, and I'll let her speak about this, but motivation within herself to kind of want to go on these trips and kind of what she did to make that happen. So I'll let Julia speak a little bit about Costa Rica and maybe her experience in preparing.
Yeah, so for Costa Rica, like, I know when I first heard about it, I was like really excited for the opportunity, like even just the thought of the opportunity of going somewhere on like this amazing vacation and going with the school. But like, my first thought would be like, it's obviously expensive to do something like that. But like, after I talked to the teachers about it and saw all of the fundraising opportunities that were available, and especially the fact that I think when I first signed up for Costa Rica, I had like seven or eight months to raise money, and it ended up not being that dramatic of a cost. And like, through the school, I had the opportunity to raise money. I could have sold chocolate bars. Or what I did was I worked at various concession stands at like sports games or theater productions. And that was a really good opportunity for me because it like wasn't hard. They were always available for people to work at them, and you make a certain percent of the profits depending on how many kids were there. And that, for me, was really good. And it helped me get like a good portion of the money raised for me to go on this trip. And that kind of like motivated me, like it made me think that it was more realistic to go on. And then also just like the thought of the trip motivated me more to like get more hours at work and like go out of my way to work more so that I would be able to have this opportunity.
Was it worth it? All that hard work?
Yeah. It was the greatest week of my life.
Good. Very good. Well, this is an action item. So do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the overnight field trip to Galapagos Islands.
And do I have a second? Dr. Sorensen seconds it. Any further discussion? Are you still offline?
Yeah, I can't get on at all.
Yes, Ms. Badger.
I just want to say that I am so jealous. The minute I read Galapagos Islands, I was like, this is amazing, and what an opportunity. Clearly, you know how I'm going to vote, but if you need another person to go with you, I'm your girl. I'll pay.
So we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, then all those in favor? Unanimous. Have a good trip.
Thanks, and welcome back. I know they just got back last night.
Yeah, we just got back last night from Costa Rica.
Now we have the, yep, okay, we have the dance championship. It is next week.
Yes, tonight, we have the out-of-state field trip for Plymouth North and Plymouth South and South High School dance teams to the New England Championship. They actually qualified. There's short notice because the qualification meet was about a week and a half ago. So we bring it to you tonight because it is an out-of-state field trip. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Mark if there's anything else you want to say.
Hi, everyone. How are you doing? I just want to say that we have a biology teacher at South that did that when they were in college. And that's, they still talk about how fantastic it was. So it's a fantastic opportunity for the kids. I'm here representing both A.D.s, as Mr. Fry had some minor hand surgery today. And Chris, the athletic director from North, is covering Scott's meeting. So I've come here to talk to you. This is fantastic. Our dance teams have come a long way. They're doing fantastic. And it's just like any other athletic event, as they progress through the year. They have now qualified for the New England's in Enfield, Connecticut. And they're looking to go. They will be, like they have been doing, they've been sharing the same bus. They've been getting along. It's been great bonding. And I checked in with the dance teacher on one of those occasions, so it's working out very well. It's a great opportunity for both teams, and we just need your approval so they can go and dance away.
Very good. Then it's the action item. And Ms. Badger, a motion?
I move that we approve the out-of-state field trip for the dance teams.
Do I have a second? Ms. Hunt seconds it. Any further discussion? Then all those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are, yeah. Okay, school fundraisers. Anybody have any comments or observations about the school fundraisers? I had a few. One that, just point out to everybody, is, you know, sometimes we dismiss, you know, bake sales. You know, we try to do something really fancy, like we're going to have a restaurant participation, or we're going to do candles or some...
Right, Yankee candles.
Did you see on the list, the thing that had the best return on investment was the Manamit Bake Sale, which was like, I think, $2,800 for a bake sale on election day. Yes, exactly. They hit it. Now, the...
It's my precinct, so...
The open night. The open night didn't do so well. I think it was $48, which surprised me. But if you think about it, people come in to see the classes, and then they leave. There's not a lot of hang time. But, yeah, I saw that number jump right out at me. I was like, we should have more bake sales. Go back the old tried and true.
Well, there's no overhead.
And they'll be doing their Family Feud soon, too, again. So I'm sure they'll have great success with that as well.
Yeah.
Getting closer to that playground.
Yes. One other thing was, so when we have something that is, something that's a fundraiser throughout the entire year, would it be possible to get a quarterly readout?
Sure, we can ask them for that.
That way, we could just see how they're trending?
Yep.
And with the realization that they're going to keep going for the rest of the year?
Right. So we can see what they have in terms of receipts today?
Yeah, just to get a feel for, is it trending well, or it's not successful or something? That was, those were the ones that jumped out at me, because I saw quite a few were year-round.
Yes, they do have a lot of those.
One thing that I thought was, I was shocked, was the school merchandise one on the Spirit Week. That was terrible. They sold so much stuff, and they wound up keeping, I think, less than $100.
Yeah, a lot of those aren't really, the purpose of some of those aren't to make money. It's really, they're bringing money in, but it's more spirit and promoting school spirit. So it's really not a, they're raising, they're collecting funds. They're not really raising funds for a, it's a pass-through.
Because I was going to say, wow, that looks like it was a lot of work.
Get the gear.
Get the recognition out there.
We got T-shirts. We need more T-shirts.
It's not really. Did we sign up for the Family Feud?
No, we talked about it, but I don't think, I think it's too late.
They're returning champions. How can you not go?
Is it too late for us? Because I heard there's a lot of teams.
Can you get us in?
I'm sure I can make a phone call.
I thought we could last meeting, we were going to do it.
Yeah, I just didn't know though if we ever signed up for it. That was my question.
If you could.
Do you know the date?
We did know the date at one point.
Yeah.
What's the date? Should anybody know the date?
Oh, you know what?
They told me before I left, but I can't.
If you allow me to go on my phone, I know that Dr. Frain tweeted it out today.
Well, we've got some Plymouth South middle. They've been talking a little bit that they were going to beat us, so we gotta...
We have to field a team, because remember our... We have to field a team, because remember our honorary member?
This Saturday?
Last year was my wife, and she's getting pressure to participate in...
Something else.
The other teams.
The fourth, Saturday.
Saturday, the...
This Saturday.
The 4th of March?
This Saturday.
It's this Saturday?
Oh, my.
Let me, let me text. I'll text them if you don't mind.
I can do it.
And who's sponsoring it?
Manamit Elementary.
That's the Manamit Elementary.
Manamit Elementary for the playground.
Oh, yeah, okay.
What do we think? Do we think we have enough for a team? Checking calendar.
Is it at night?
What time is it?
We could do it.
We could do it.
What time? Night, let's...
Was that like, what, six last year or something?
Figure anything after six.
Yeah, I'm good.
I could do it.
I think it has to be a team of five.
Yeah, I think it was five.
We could do it. I could do it.
We got one, two, three.
I'm not sure. I can't remember what I've got.
Where is it?
It'll be...
Again?
Is that north?
Same, same as it was last year?
I, Joe's away with the military. As long as I can find a babysitter, I can go.
You can bring them. They had kids in the audience last time.
It might get long, though.
Oh, it'll get long for the miss who's...
Because we're going to be returning champs, of course.
We got our five, then. We have a five solid, we're just...
I can promise.
So, we have a five solid, and then if you can work it out, you'd be an alternate.
I have a message into Principal Frain, so maybe before the evening, we'll know if there's a spot.
Didn't get to him sooner, but...
We're sandbagging. We don't want to intimidate anybody, so we're intimidating at the last minute.
It's a stealth, a stealth attack.
Yeah, it's kind of like a sandbagging thing, you know?
Where we trash talk, you know?
No, I guess. Only one last year. We got gift cards, it was kind of...
Okay, so, that wasn't on the agenda, but now we have that taken care of. That's, no, that's perfect. I'm glad we did it. Um, but now, reports and proposals from committee members. Anybody like to give us an update of... Who wants to go? You are the committee member.
Yeah, so, the only thing that I had to report on is the distinguished visitors committee actually met, and I had another meeting that night, so I wasn't able to go. But, we did meet, the, well, the preliminary group met to start looking at applications. Um, I believe we're going to meet, they're going to meet this week, this Saturday or is it next Saturday?
This Saturday. You're going to be very busy.
This Saturday. Um, they're going to start doing interviews. They were able to just kind of do a preliminary go-through of them. You've gotten good response, then, from the parents with the dates? Great. So, then, that's, that's kind of how it's going.
You're going to do that and go right into the competition.
Yep, and I did get an email, or I got a message from Ben from Japan just yesterday. He really would like the adult information as soon as possible. I did give him this, um, school committee and selectmen information, but any other adults that might be going, he's looking to book the hotels. I know we can't give them exact dates until we have our flights booked.
I can follow up to that. First of all, I talked to Melissa Regge today, this morning, and she's going to finalize adults on the town side. And I should have those by tomorrow.
It's just one, right? Because that's all I told them.
I'll have names tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. The next, um, item regarding travel, I contacted the travel agent, and, um, they are putting together a price of what it would cost for, um, for the trip. So, it's a travel agent in Boston that we used last time. They specialize in travel in Asia, so they are very familiar with working with that and did a fantastic job last time. So, I did make those, that phone call before vacation. No, actually, I made it during vacation, last Thursday. And she, she will be getting back to me as soon as she gets a price. But, they will set it up so it'll be payments, and we'll manage it, and I think things are rolling that way. But, I, the dates I gave were the dates that we discussed, July 30th through August 5th.
Okay, and that's pretty much what I told him, but...
Those are the dates that I shared with the travel agent. So, right now, when, when, when she gets back with me, I will then let you know, you can let the committee know what that is.
Is this an official delegation?
Yes.
So, how many, how many are going?
Don't know yet. I know there's one member of the board of selectmen. We do, we'll have two chaperones, we'll have somebody from the school department. We have, Dr. Sorensen's going for the school committee. So...
I was talking to the chairman, Tavoris, and he thought there might be another member of the board of selectmen going.
Yeah, that's important information, because they've, I've asked them several times, and they only gave me one name. And that's what I've been given, Japan.
Yes, I think that will be clarified tomorrow.
Okay.
Because I've asked, and there was some surprise, but then, on the other side, I just need confirmation because I said it's based on tickets.
Yep.
And we got to move quickly on this.
Right, and to be honest with you, the distinguished visitor committee has, has only voted to send one as far as what they're paying for. So, if there is a second one, we need to tell somebody as soon as possible.
I will let you know tomorrow.
Yeah. And then, um, other than that, you know, once we have, as soon as I can get them that information, I think they wanted to know if anyone was bringing, like, if there were couples that needed rooms, or if... They also wanted to know, like, who was staying in, like, the chaperones, they're assuming they're going to stay with families versus who they needed hotel rooms for, which is norm, you know, but if, depending on if it's a school administrator, if they're going to be included in the, you know what I mean? We have to work that out. And they are looking for that information ASAP. I know they were planning a trip for the adults as well to Hot Springs.
Okay. So, I would say by Saturday, we would have the list and what accommodations will be required by attendees.
Okay.
Okay.
I know that he's also said they're all fighting the flu right now, so that everybody's been sick. So, he's trying to contact me when he can, but he said everybody's not, you know, the flu is running rampant over there right now. So, they're going to get rid of, get all out of the system before we get there. But, yeah, so, we're looking forward to a long day on Saturday, doing interviews.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Anybody else who reports? Yes.
No, you're fine. No, we have an alumni association meeting on the 23rd of March at 6:00 at the RE/MAX. If anybody wants to come, it's fun.
At the RE/MAX, you want to say where?
Uh, Benny's parking lot.
Chinese.
Benny's, whatever that's called.
Want me to mention it?
Do you have the details? Yeah.
Sorry, I'm going to jump in on hers. Uh, we also want to mention, and I know that they've been putting it on Facebook, and they have it on the website, that they're also doing that same raffle this year that we did last year for the premium seats to graduation. So, they're doing four seats to Plymouth North, four seats to Plymouth South. I believe it's $20 apiece for the raffle tickets. Um, you can get them at PlymouthAlumni.net. So, any parents of graduating seniors, it's a really good, the people that won last year had fantastic seats. So, it was great to be right up front.
Mrs. Burgess.
I had gone to the Plymouth North School Council this past month, and what they had basically for the presentation was about MAP Academy. And it was very interesting, and what's coming up right now is, I didn't go because it's the presentation that they're going to present to us, so I didn't need to hear it twice. I thought once was, once was good enough, don't you think? And so, anyway, we, and we all went to the Education Foundation dinner.
We did?
Yes, we did.
That's great.
Yeah, and, um, and also, I was a judge at the, you were a judge at the science, you were, yeah. So, at the science fair. So, that was, that was interesting. And, um, well, then, I go on to other ones. The PYDC?
It's later.
Not yet, okay.
Just want to follow up. Um, we were notified just a short time ago that the MAP Academy was approved by the Department of Education.
Yes.
So, the vote was just a few minutes...
Oh, and they got it?
Oh, they did.
That's wonderful.
Misunderstood you there.
It's just approved.
Okay.
Excellent.
Yeah, they're there now.
So, that's breaking news.
Breaking news, MAP Academy.
Rich probably knows.
Yeah, he's typing furiously.
Okay, now I have to do my part. So, we have, Mrs. Dargy was very nice to give me a little cheat sheet here to try to, we need participation on several things coming up. As we know, Wednesday, the 8th, is when we have the DESE meetings. So, that's the Comprehensive District Review, remember? And we have Mr. Morgan signed up for 6:00 to 7:00 on the 8th. And we have Mrs. Trisselli signed up for 4:30 to 5:30. And I can sign up as soon as I know when you're signing up.
Probably 5:00 to 6:00.
Could you read out all the time slots?
Yep. So, you have 4:30 to 5:30, 5:00 to 6:00, and 6:00 to 7:00.
And I'll do 5:00.
And you'll do 5:00.
Where is that?
Yeah, the department would prefer, the members from the committee would prefer the earlier times than the late times, because they're starting their days at 7:30. So, if that's just a message from...
I'm confused. I'm confused what, what...
Okay, let's, let's back up a second.
Yeah, back up.
So, have you all got the emails?
I didn't get them.
You should have gotten the email. It was, it's for the Comprehensive District Review by the DESE.
Oh, okay.
They're coming to interview us and everything. So, they're trying to be flexible and give us multiple times. But, as Dr. Campbell just mentioned, they'd like us to fill up the earlier time first.
Preferably, yes.
And they only want us to fill up one block, or they want us to...
No, if there's a, if there's a, if there's a quorum, they will split you into two groups.
No, it's three, three each, so we won't have a quorum.
Yeah, but if...
Right. Well, let's say hypothetically, if there are only four of you available, they would do two, they would do two separate interviews at that time.
Oh, I got you.
Yep.
Okay. So, let's see how it plays out.
What date is this?
The 8th. So, let's see how it plays out. So, right now, we have, Mrs. Trisselli is at 4:30 to 5:30. And can you do?
I can get out early if it's easier. So, yeah.
Then, I can do that also. So, that'll give us three. I'm assuming I can do that also.
Do you want to read your calendar? Your crazy calendar?
So, so, we have that date.
Okay.
That time slot blocked out.
So, you don't need any more?
No, we do.
Everybody goes down.
No, I meant on that time.
On that time slot, we don't.
They said they'd split it into two. If there were four.
Yes.
I have to be, I'm getting a ride, so I'm, that's my limitation. So, that's why we filled up the two really fast there on the first one. So, I'm sorry.
But if there's four, they'd split it into two.
But let's, let's keep going and see if that's the situation or not.
Oh, okay.
So, other times, 5:00 to 6:00, or 6:00 to 7:00?
I won't be here. I'll be in DC.
You can't do it at all. And Mr. Morgan can do 6:00 to 7:00. Can you do earlier? I'd be cutting the train.
Yeah, because even if I take an early train, I'm not into 5:40, so I would actually have to take time off if they're coming sooner.
Right, okay. So, we'll leave you there, and...
I said I'll do 5:00, but tell me what you want me to do.
Well, I don't know yet. Give me another minute, and we'll see where we land here. And what time could you do?
5:00 to 6:00.
This is Wednesday, the 5th?
8th.
8th is a Saturday. No?
No.
Never mind. I'm not here.
Monday's the 6th. Yeah, it's that, sure, much, yeah.
So, right now, we have blocks of 3, 2, and 1.
Okay.
Does that work for them? I mean, that means they're going to have to be there at 6:00 to 7:00.
I will run that by them. They haven't finalized, we have dozens of people throughout the district being interviewed that day in focus groups, so I will, they're going to give us the final approval on the schedule on Wednesday. So, I will give them an update tonight or tomorrow on your availability, and we'll get back to all of you. So, if I get this correct, we have...
We have Mrs. Trisselli, Ms. Badger, and myself.
For the 4:30?
4:30 to 5:30.
Okay.
We have Dr. Sorensen and Mrs. Burgess, 5:00 to 6:00. And we have Mr. Morgan, 6:00 to 7:00.
And this is...
Excellent. I will add that, I will send that to all of them and ask them, and get back to all of you regarding that.
Acceptable, and, okay. And where, where, where will the...
Where is it? Look, where were we going to be?
At Central Office.
Oh, at Central Office, okay.
Get off way early.
It's a little far to get out there, but I'm sure.
I could probably get another ride, and then I could want to take a later slot.
No, I can get there. I'm just...
She's joking.
I'm just saying I have to leave much earlier than I would if it was...
I can just, I can pick you, I can take you, or I can go at 5:00, the 5:00 o'clock. I'm flexible.
You have to go way out of your way, though. I appreciate it, but...
I can get you.
I'll drop my kids off at Nana's house. I'm good.
So, we look like we're set. So, you'll report back those times and, and give us some feedback?
If there's any, if there's any issue with any of those times, which the only one that may be would be yours, Mr. Morgan. And if that's the case, I'll let you know right away, and you may be excused.
There we go, yeah. Hopefully, it'll work out, though.
Yep, thank you. I appreciate all your support.
That's good. Thank you. Now, here comes the trickier one. Now, we have, it's very important, leading up to this town meeting, that we hit the caucuses and that we have representation at the caucus meetings. So, whereas we have, we obviously know where they are, but we don't know the times on all of them yet, which is democracy great. Yeah. No, I, no, I know it's not.
It's early yet for caucuses.
Something you can control.
It is. They really do it kind of last minute.
So, the ones that we know for certain, well, I don't know how, the best way to handle this is, is there, is there precincts that, for instance, West, or home precincts that you want to sign up for?
I think I've already signed up for the one for 1113. It's at the airport. There's actually, I think, a date for that one.
It was March 30th, Thursday, March 30th at 7:00, yeah.
Now, how many do you want at each one?
Well, we'd like to have a minimum of two at each one if we could, and we're, and we're going to have staff.
I will, I will be at every month, Gary, I, and Patty, Chris, whoever, will be at every one of these, so...
Some of them are on Mondays.
If there's a conflict, somebody will leave school committee and do the presentation, come back to school committee, but we will be at every single caucus.
Okay.
March 16th?
So, for, for West, 11 and 13, do we have a second?
I can go to that one.
Do we have any of the other? I'll tell you, I can...
I can do Town Hall.
Town Hall, where was the Town Hall?
Because that's the only other one with a date, right? Because I can do that, too.
So, that's...
I can go to one and...
That's the Forum, so...
No time.
So, I can do the Forum.
Oh, I thought that was my car. I'm, that's my precinct.
Number three, Town Hall?
Yeah.
No day yet.
No day yet.
You, but do you want to sign up for that?
I, depending on the day, yeah. As long as it's not, I don't have to work.
I'll go anywhere.
If you, if you're doing the Forum, then I'll sign up.
I'll do the Forum. I'll do the Forum, too.
I can do 1, 2, 3, or 4. It doesn't matter. I can do a couple of...
What, I'm sorry, give it to me again?
1 through 4. 1, 2, 3, 4.
You can do any of those.
Yes, or a couple of them or something.
So, that's the Loring Center is 1 and 2?
And the 1 is 2 is Cold Spring, isn't it? Where do they hold it?
The Loring Center, Loring Center.
Oh, 1 and 2 is together?
Yeah.
Oh, good. And then, then there's 3 and 4.
And then, 3 and 4, so 3 is Town Hall, 4 is the Public Library.
The library, okay.
What day is that?
So, the 4 is on March 20th. That one we know already.
Oh, 3/20, okay.
At 6:00.
Okay.
It's the boardroom at the Public Library. And that's a school committee meeting.
Yep.
Oh.
Of course.
Oh.
We will have representation from our end there, if, you know, we just have to decide if we want... We will have representation from our end there, if, you know, we just have to decide if we want school committee, or we can manage to.
As long as we can be certain to have a quorum.
Just Jesse?
Have any?
I was thinking that, because the last time we did this, Marge and I did one and two at the Loring Center.
Yeah.
And I thought consistency would be, would be a good thing, they get to see the same people again.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
They all know me.
Put you one and two.
Is one and two giving us a day and time yet?
No, 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 they haven't reported a date and time yet. The other one that I have a date and time for is Saturday, March twenty-fifth, for Manamit, the Manamit Library, that'll be for precincts seven and nine, so it's two.
We'll be at the school board conference.
I can do it.
You'll be at the conference, then?
Yes.
And you can do that one.
So far, it's open, what time is it, twelve?
Michelle? Nine, not yet posted, why did they say, usually it's seven and fourteen go together. All right.
The three and four of them meet together.
It'd be nice if they did like four of them together.
Yeah. Did what?
They did four of them together, or five of them together, that'd be great.
They call that town meeting.
Oh, yes.
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to do the Loring Center, yeah, and the.
Okay.
The library, but I just don't know when that.
I will do precinct fifteen, I think it's important.
That's.
It's my precinct, anyway.
Yeah, it is.
And I'm happy to do any of them, but I'm gonna be gone the, like, the last three, like, the twenty eighth, twenty ninth, thirtieth of March, go for work, I'll be in DC, otherwise, I'll do any of them.
Okay. So we do, so we don't know the dates yet, so it's.
Yeah, just let me know.
All right, so I have that one, that one, that one. And, why is there?
Ten.
So they do three at the airport, they do ten, eleven, and thirteen at the airport, wow. I didn't know that, didn't know they did three.
And there's two people going already on that one.
Are they different?
Yep, but do you wanna do ten?
Yeah, I'll do ten, just depending on the date and time.
Yep, okay.
You know.
And.
Ten is hell where?
Mr. Morgan, the same thing?
Um, depending on a date.
Date and time, right. But I just penciled, penciled in tentative.
Yeah, penciled.
No, I'll do twelve, I mean, that's mine, if, depending on the day.
I'll do twelve.
The date makes a whole lot of difference.
And Ms. Hunt, you have the number three, did you?
I have three, but you don't have a date, you, you don't have a date for that yet.
Dates and times, yeah.
I mean, you can put me in for it, as soon as we know the date, though, I need to make sure that I'm not working.
For like, the harbor room at Town Hall for five? For precinct five?
With my, is that?
And five is alone?
Yeah, but they're meeting there.
Oh, okay.
They happen to be meeting, so both at the Town Hall?
Yep.
All right, good, that's most of them, we have at least something there, and we can fill in, as we know more of the dates and times, we can fill in a few more.
I talked to Town Manager Regu today, and she was trying to move that along a little bit quicker, because everyone wants to, there are several presentations.
Yes.
That have to be made.
Well, yeah.
Different departments, so they all wanna know.
Yeah, because they always wait until the end.
And if we want to have the public to have an opportunity to meet their town meeting members.
Yes.
They gotta get the dates out there, so people can plan.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Is that harsh, but, it's true.
I have one, one circle back update. Dr. Frain texted me.
We're out.
There's sixteen teams right now, and you're the first alternate.
We don't have any pull?
They can kick somebody out.
You gotta tell somebody how hard it is.
Look at the school budget.
Yeah.
I also have an, may I also give an update? Yeah, I just got a text, the induction of the National Honor Society at South was originally planned for Thursday, the snow day, it was then supposed to be planned for next Wednesday, but because, because the hockey team has made the tournament, it now has to be moved again. So the National Honor Society induction for South is going to be Tuesday, March the seventh, at seven PM, and the, the team would like to know RSVP from school committee, so.
I can go.
We need to let them know if we're gonna be there.
I can go.
Time is it at, seven?
I can go.
It's Tuesday, the seventh, at seven.
I'm really sad that I'm not gonna be around, I'm gonna be in DC.
So far, I mean, I can go.
So, I'm gonna write down some names, and I'll text them back.
So, we've got Ms. Badger, myself.
And Lee.
And Lee.
I mean, it's Trisselli.
And Ms. Trisselli.
And that won't be when we are meeting with the selectmen or anything like that.
Michelle.
It's like a Shelley.
That isn't when we're meeting with the selectmen.
Two, seven, seven?
Oh, I'm meeting with the selectmen tomorrow night.
Yeah, okay.
The immortal will come to that, too. Okay, all right, I will tell them there are five of us coming. Thank you.
That'll be a good turnout, that's good. Very good. I will give this, my sheets to you, and. Very good, thank you, I know that that is tedious, but has to be done. Now, the Plymouth Youth Development Collaborative.
They also were supposed to meet on the, at the ninth, on Friday, and it was canceled because of the snow, they later had the meeting on the seventeenth. Some of us still thought it was at eight o'clock, so the DA's office and me were there. But anyhow, I got his information, because he was going off somewhere, and, and I went back at ten thirty at the time, but not many people arrived, and mostly what we went over was, was really what we've done before, you weren't, you weren't there either, you, yeah.
We had a, we had another meeting.
Another meeting, yeah, so there were very, very few people there, and so we sort of went over the grant and why people weren't responding too well to the survey, but I think it was because the first part, people were very confused, and so they were redesigning it, and I don't know if it's been redesigned or not.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit.
Okay, good.
We have a drug-free community grant, it's a federal grant, I actually went down to DC about a week and a half ago, anyone interested in applying for that grant, it's a half million dollar grant that would bring drug, drug education, prevention, resources to the communities that apply, it's probably gonna be about five hundred plus applicants for about fif, no more than fifty grants, so, but we're working with the DA, I'm working with the DA's office.
Yeah.
On that application, the deadline is the fifteenth of May, we won't find out until the summer if we receive that, those questions that were in that survey are specifically in the grant, so there's really no way to change them, because those are the questions that they're asking. So, we understand that some people may not have the background to answer some of those questions, so, the people, we did have a dozen or so from PYDC that did answer those questions, so that gives us good feedback in terms of, you know, providing some insight to that, so, we're making good progress, the grant application directions are over a hundred pages long, so it's pretty tedious, but we're making some progress.
Because I know that the DA was going to present on, I guess you went with him to.
Yes, I was with, with Tim Cruz and, and members from the district attorney's office there.
And he had printed up, you know, some very good information, which I took back for him, but, and everybody was pleased with the information, so that was, that was a good thing.
So, they're, they're a great support.
Yeah, okay, great.
Perfect. Building Committee.
Yes. Okay. Again, this one was put off, too, so we met last Thursday, and. They, I think most of the, well, I don't know what I hear at Rotary from him and what I hear everywhere, but anyway. They, they were working on the millwork and casing, it's almost done. There's a school committee site visit, three eighteen, am I right, at ten o'clock?
In the morning?
I don't know.
Oh, they brought it up, the school committee site, a site visit.
Oh, that's on Saturday?
Huh?
Saturday morning at ten?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that is, that is true.
Okay. I've written it. Three eighteen, so that's, that's, they need to know that.
That is absolutely true.
What time is it at?
Forgot about that one, yeah, okay. Okay.
So, meet at the same construction trailer?
Okay. And then they were talking about raising, raising the old building, would it last through mid-October, from? What was it, ma?
We'll start, we turn the building over in July.
In July, so, so through mid-October that they'd be raising the old building?
Can I say something right?
Yes, of course you can.
I, I had asked about when students return to school in September, the traffic pattern will be a little bit different, but not complicated, as they come in, the building will not be completely demolished at that point, it'll be fenced off while the building, so the vehicles will come in straight in, they'll make the right, and they'll go, you know, between the stadium and the gym.
Yeah.
And then around the back, and then up to the new building, on the way out, they're gonna go the opposite way, so it'll sort of be a loop going around until they get the road built in.
Yep.
That shouldn't be a problem, I don't think. Lot of signage.
A lot of signage.
Lot of signage, okay, big arrows.
I think we're gonna let families know in, with the report cards in June, as well as with the back-to-school information in August, so they can plan accordingly, if, you know, it's lost along the way, so.
The project's on time, it's coming along really well, I think, yeah, yeah, and, okay. Do you have anything else on South High? That's about all I have.
They have a pretty heavy work schedule, they have a hundred and sixty-five people working each day now, which is a pretty high schedule, and I think a real, a real indication of the completion of the building is, is most of the glasswork is in place.
Yes.
So that tells you quite a lot at that point, and there are certain areas that are completely done at this point as well, so, it's seventy-five percent complete, oh, no, 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 my mistake on that one.
No.
And, and one final thing, which is interesting, before they demolish the building, the police department will go into the old Plymouth South and use it for training.
Like they did with North.
That they did with North, that will happen.
A little bit better, like.
So, as of last Thursday, as of last Thursday, they have seven weeks, they had seven weeks and a day to complete the building. So, onto the Sims House, that's seventy percent comple, completed, it's on target, oh, yeah, there's a tour of that, too. That's for us, I know, on the building committee, it's the same morning, at eight thirty, if anybody wants a tour, Sims House is at eight thirty in the morning. Sims House, eight thirty in the morning on the eighteenth, and then ten o'clock for the school committee at South High.
I think Tom's doing both tours, correct?
Huh?
Tom is doing both.
Tom's doing both tours, right. So, yeah, and, so they're gonna turn that one over to the town on July first. Let's see, New Town Hall, nine AM, but we, they had a visit Saturday, I think that the only one that went was.
I did, I went to the tour of the, of the New Town Hall, it's seventy-five percent complete, it's, it's, it's pretty amazing, when you, when you go into that eighteen, twenty, and see that courthouse, it's, it's amazing. It, it, too, will be online by September.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, the police on that South High School thing is July eighth through sixteen, that they're doing that, yeah, that they'll be, yeah, okay, I'm, I'm noticing, I kept weird notes, they're, they kind of like run into each other, so I'm having a little hard time. So, the New Town Hall, they have February, yeah, that's it, the Russell Street parking deck, that was a part of it, did you go over to the parking deck, where they were gonna have the parking deck?
What about?
Did you go over?
No, not much, but we have, we have the, we, if anybody wants to see it, we have the parking deck scheduled.
All the information, yeah.
Of activities coming up.
We do have it. So, if anybody wants to see anything, even the pictures of the inside, I have them, too. And the maritime facility was put off because the project manager could not be at a meeting, the, oh, we're finally doing next week, this week, the purchase and sale for the, of property for the fire station, so, that's, that's a good one. And Mount Pleasant School, we took a vote at the building committee to sell it to the, to a developer, or whoever's gonna buy it, and.
Wait a minute, why did they get a vote on that?
By charter, building committee has a vote on, on bill, seller buildings, by seller buildings.
And, oh, and then I, and I, going back to Town Hall, it says that in March, they're gonna put in a furniture order, and Pac TV's gonna be outfitting the conference rooms to get ready, so, that's it.
Okay. Mrs. Frye, appointments, leaves of absences, and resignations.
Yes, we have a small list tonight, one coach-adviser appointment, one classified appointment, one long-term attorney leave, and one short-term attorney leave.
Thank you. Now, Dr. Myssis, the homeschooling plan approval?
Yes, tonight, we have three homeschool plans that have been submitted to Dr. Halpin's office, and they have met the requirements set forth by the school committee and approved by Dr. Halpin, and I recommend approval tonight.
This is an action item?
I'll move the recommendation of administration.
Second. Moved and seconded it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? And Ms. Badger, the accounts payable warrant.
Where school committee members have provided, provided with a copy of the cost and or transfer and rec, or transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move that Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant S zero three zero two seventeen, dated March twenty seventeen, March second, twenty seventeen, in the amount of one million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Ms. Hunt seconds it, any further discussion? All those in favor? Anamis? Now, we have some minutes to go through, we can start with January ninth. Anybody have any questions concerning the minutes for January ninth? And do we have a motion? Ms. Badger moves it?
I move that we approve the minutes, minute, minutes, meeting minutes for January ninth, twenty seventeen, sorry.
And do we have a second? Mr. Morgan seconds it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanim, one abstention, Ms. Hunt abstains. Now, January tenth.
I'll move as presented.
Thank you, do I have a second? Ms. Badger seconds it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? January twenty-third, do I have a motion?
I'll move as presented.
Thank you. Dr. Sorenson moves it, do we have a second? Ms. Badger seconds it, any further discussion? Ms. Hunt?
Just one little tiny minor thing, I think a cappella is one word. Is it, is it two words?
Yes, it is.
It's two words or one?
One.
Oh, okay, it's in there as two words.
So, it's right?
That was tiny.
That was tiny.
It is tiny, I just.
I'm, I'm just, I just wanna make a comment that, that those three minutes, those three meetings were excellent, perfectly done.
Yeah, they were great.
I was, very easy to read it, thank you very much.
Very well done.
You can sing that, though.
I almost lost, I almost forgot to ask.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Now, obsolete equipment, first we have, well, first we have, what is that, that's the technical.
Yes, tonight, we have a number of items from Plymouth South High School, the first one is in the area of vocational education, we have a, a number of items listed here, and these are items that have been donated over the years, and items that are beyond repair and obsolete, what we are doing with all of these items is we are putting them on the online auction, and we're generating some revenue based on that, opposed to discarding and having them removed for scrap, because a lot of these items would be just scrap, so, it's pretty amazing how one. So it's pretty amazing how one, one person's junk is another person's treasure. So the, this, all of these items will be put up for auction, and people from who knows where can bid on them and.
Through municipal auction?
Yes, yes. Through municipal auction, through town hall.
And all the money would come to one of our accounts or to the town?
It actually goes, it goes to Lynn Barrett, and then Lynn Barrett has the responsibility of redistribution.
May I ask a question? And I don't even know how to ask this question, but when you look over all these items, and they're donated items. We have, we're going to a brand-new building. I know when somebody shows up on your doorstep and wants to give you a, a four-stroke motor. It's hard to say, no, we don't want it, but I, I think we have to say notice on this stuff, the people are bringing up to the door.
Well, I will tell you that we have gotten really good at that.
Oh, good.
And I will tell you that a lot of this, a lot of this has been donated. Some of this stuff is twenty years, sitting up in the loft in different shops. And I'll tell you, we have been on a cleaning rampage, trying to get through the school to get all of these out.
Well, I would hope they did that.
Well, there, if there's anything usable, I mean, most of these have parts taken off of them for other projects, so they've been picked through. But people want them for some value to make another part whole, so they buy them.
Right.
But it's pretty remarkable the amount of things that people have donated that we, we, and it gets to Dr. Soren's point. Years ago, we used to have people pull up in cars with a trunk of computers that they couldn't get rid of at the transfer station. They wanna bring it to us and say, I wanna make a donation. And that's not what we do. And, and we've gotten really good at refusing things that we don't have a, an immediate useful purpose.
I'm glad to hear that. That's why I brought it up, yeah.
They have one of my cars.
Heard that, right, Mark?
We've also housed a lot of stuff for the district, and I'm much meaner about it, so. But it's, we've gotten rid of a lot. I'm a little more strict about it. But we've, we've been very, you know, we've had the old bean, everything gets housed there, because we're very kind people, so.
And the boat, we have a few boats and stuff. Okay, so we have this list. Do we have a motion?
I thought we had one.
Did we already have one?
I don't think so.
I'm just ahead of myself.
Ms. Badger moves it?
I'll move, yes, dispose of the equipment.
Ms. Hunt seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Good. Now we have obsolete books and material.
Yes, we have obsolete books and material from Plymouth South High School. These are out of print, and they're going to be donated, so these are recommended for disposal, or redistribution, put it that way.
Do we have a motion? Ms. Badger?
I move that we dispose of these obsolete books.
Second? Mr. Morgan seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Same thing, next one?
The next one, these are books from the vocational program. There are a number of books that are outdated, and I recommend that these books be discard, discarded.
Mrs. Burgess moves it, second. Dr. Sorenson seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? And the last one, Plymouth South High School.
And this is the last one. This is from the English Department, a number of books from the English Department that are out of date. And these will be donated as well, and I recommend approval.
I have a question there, but I'm, I'm not going near it. I'm not gonna let it just go, and I'm gonna ask, is there a motion? On this one? Is a motion, Ms. Badger?
I move that we get rid of the obsolete books.
And Ms. Hunt, did I see your, Ms. Hunt seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that was good. We had a lot of dates to work out and stuff, but we got through it. And we are ahead of schedule, so that's good. Without objection, somebody read the time for me, please?
Eight thirty-five.
Eight thirty-five. We're, without objection, we're adjourned at eight thirty-five.